Good afternoon and welcome everyone to Spokane City Council. Our briefing. First off, I'm going to have Mr... Ms. Fisher call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have Mr. Wright read us into executive session.
Yes, council... Council is going to proceed to executive session under RCW 423110 to discuss potential litigation.
I think they requested for 30 minutes. And that will return at 4:05. ...
Now, out of executive session and we'll resume our meeting. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Council President, Council members. Not seeing anything on the current council agenda that needs to be briefed unless someone wants to correct me on that. So, moving to advance, I have first Silas, who I believe is online, yep, online, briefing item number one, under consent.
Hello, my name is Silas England. I work in the IT department as an IT manager. I am briefing a request to increase a value blanket for the CompuNet vendor. We are needing to increase this from 750,000 to 1.25 million. This value blanket runs May 14th, 2024 through May 14th, 2025. The main reasons we need to increase this value blanket is that we were fortunate enough to secure some grant funding from the state that will be reimbursed, but we need to increase the value blanket to handle those expenses. These expenses are mostly around inserting firewalls between some partners, the county and Shrek, as well as upgrading our Cisco Identity Services engine, which will make our network smarter and more secure, control who can access and which users or devices are allowed to access our network. And then additionally, grant funded with some wastewater ripworth SCADA network upgrades to some switching equipment. Those were well over $350,000 combined in state grants. And then we have a initiative to replace some of our core switching for the city network. There's approximately 273,000 to replace these eight core switches located throughout the city network that are nearing end of life, near 10 years old. Happy to answer any additional questions?
Not seen any. Thank you.
Thanks, Silas. Next, item two, A and B will be briefed by Libby Shadle.
Good afternoon. We have two outside council legal contracts to amend. The first one is with Van Ness Feldman, Adam Gravely, who provides strategic advice with regards to water-related issues. The second is with Ann Cartohan and Andre Salez, and that's strategic with KNR Gates, and that's strategic water advice, or I'm sorry, strategic advice with regards to the Climate Commitment Act.
Does that relate to the waste energy plant? Okay.
In navigating the regulations. Any other questions?
Thank you. Item three will be briefed by Tammy Palmquist.
Good afternoon. Donna had a conflict, but this is a rezone going from Office 35 to OR 35.
Actually, no. First, the inter-agency agreement with Commerce. That's your first item.
I'm sorry. I hadn't had the agenda pulled up yet. So, we received a grant for the permitting system and for 375,000, so this is the acceptance of that grant. It will then match the deadlines that we've already outlined for our implementation system, which we are still on time for all the deliverables. And so, then I can actually go back to July of this year and get payment for those previous deliverables we've already accomplished.
And then, yes, since Donna had a conflict, first reading ordinances, it's Ordinance C 36615.
So, this is a rezone from, it's on Francis, it's, let's see, cross streets. So, rezone from Office 35 to OR 35, which a lot of along Francis has already, they're sort of a kind of the end of all of those blocks. A lot of people have come in and rezoned from office to office retail. It allows limited retail, so it can't just be outright. There's square footage limitations when in an office building.
What's the cross street there?
I'm trying to get.
Is that like wall?
It's Post, it's on the corner of Post and Francis, so it's between Post and Wall.
What's the, what's the, what are the properties that are on it?
All I have is the zoning map.
Okay.
But it's just that corner. So, in this area, it goes down another lot, so it's just the corner lot. It's not the whole half block. It's just one 50-foot lot.
Thanks, Tammy. All right. Next, item four, back to consent agenda. This will be briefed, four and five will be briefed by Megan on the screen.
Great. Thanks so much. Good afternoon, Council. So, item number four is actually the inter-local agreement that I briefed to you at the Urban Experience Committee meeting. I would ask for a deferral for two weeks for the county to actually complete their budgeting. So, we don't know yet what the county has agreed to, so hopefully, we can come back on December 2nd and have a final agreement ready for you. But for right now, that one, I would just ask to have held off on.
I'll make a motion to defer consent agenda item number four to the December 2nd meeting.
Second.
It's been moved to second to defer till December 2nd. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any notes, abstentions, that is deferred. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And then the second item is the three additions to the Hilliard Historic Business District before the Spokane Register of Historic Places. That was briefed at Urban Experience last week and passed with a recommendation by the Spokane Historic Landmarks Commission in October.
Any questions or comments, Councilor?
I have a question. Did you want this deferred to December 9th or December 2nd? Two weeks from the date of this agenda or two weeks from today?
For number four would be great for two weeks, just because trying to get into your, onto the city council agenda, since I know we're not going to have several of those meetings in December. So, if possible, I can't say for sure if it will be ready to go December 2nd.
Two weeks from today? Okay.
Yes.
And is that the, is that the second or the fourth?
Second.
That is the second. Okay, great. All right. Now, on to the other one around the Hilliard Historic Business District. Any commentary on that? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Megan. Item six will be briefed by Spencer Gardner.
Good afternoon, Council. This is the funding for the study of LeTo Valley, specifically around the TIF, which has been discussed. Also, sort of a larger look at infrastructure needs out there as part of our comprehensive plan update. Any questions?
Councilor Dillan.
Yeah. Thank you so much for bringing this forward and appreciate council support for allocating the ARPA funds for this. I guess, looking at the contract through June 2026 and then the scope of services, you have about six tasks kind of laid out, including the project kickoff. I guess, how are you kind of envisioning this interfacing with some of public input and feedback and some of those, I guess, benchmarks maybe to share with the public up through June 30th, 2026?
That's a good question. There's kind of two parts to the effort as defined in the scope. So, the first part is really focused on the question of tax increment financing or other revenue methods for dealing with or funding infrastructure in the area. That's kind of a faster timeline because ideally, we would have that in place within the next, say, six months or so. The second part of that is sort of longer-term planning and looking at capital facilities needs as part of the comprehensive plan. So, we anticipate the public engagement on that aspect would probably continue throughout the course of the comprehensive plan and would probably roll into those efforts.
Thank you.
Councilor Bingle.
So, I see this ending in 26. Our moratorium will end before then, at least currently. How does that affect the moratorium?
I mean, this isn't really affected one way or the other by the moratorium. I mean, it's work that needs to be done, whether there's a moratorium or not. I think the question of a moratorium is ultimately one that council has weighed in on and I wouldn't provide an opinion on that specifically.
But this would give us cause to extend a moratorium if it's like we have a study going out through 26, would that not?
Again, I think that would be council's decision to make. The staff perspective would be that we're not proposing a moratorium and we wouldn't necessarily support a moratorium.
Do we have one of our legal staff who can weigh in on that then? Because that's what it sure sounds like to me, which, again, this is not a planning department thing, but I want to understand what that means for a moratorium. Do we have somebody here?
I know Tim Fisher, who handles the land use stuff, is not here today.
Okay.
So.
I'll arrange the question to be asked of him.
Thank you.
Councilor Cat Carden.
Yeah, I guess, given that much of that area is county, is the county a part of this process and what, I guess, is there any way to expedite this? Because two years just seems like a very long time.
There is the potential that we could look at county areas as well. So, the contract does include the ability for us to look outside of our boundaries if there are areas where we serve them with infrastructure, including potentially the question of whether some of those areas should be added to the UGA in coordination with the county, or even if the city maybe needs to take over certain areas. Those are, we don't have an answer on those. It's really a contract to help us answer some of those questions. Again, there's sort of two timelines here. So, the tax increment financing or the other revenue opportunities is on a much faster timeline. And our goal is to have that done before June of this coming year. June is when those assessed values are updated. So, just from a practical standpoint, it's preferable to have any kind of revenue district in place prior to June so that you can take advantage of the lower base value. So, those two timelines are a bit different. The two-year timeframe, I think, relates to more of the higher-level questions about how this all relates to our comprehensive plan and what we see for this area into the future.
Would it be possible, then, to break those into two different contracts, one that ended shorter and then one that had a longer-range plan with the focus of infrastructure and capital needs?
I mean, I think in theory you could do that. I don't think it really makes a difference because the scope that we're adopting under this contract already kind of separates those two questions out.
I guess it would depend on the legal, the memo we would get on if that would allow us, if that would give us standing for another moratorium. Because if so, I would suggest we split that.
I think.
Dillan.
Yeah, I'll just kind of jump in here. I think it's really important to make sure that this is all tied together and really thought through holistically. And I know that this is something that folks in LeTo have been asking for, for a very long time. long time, two decades, and specifically with this subarea planning. So I can really appreciate your team and all your efforts here and being very intentional about this process.
Thank you. Can I respond to the contract question? One thing to be aware of, because this does use ARPA dollars, we would need to have a contract in place prior to the end of the year. So if we were to make changes to the contract, we may need special consideration by council through an emergency or something to get it done quickly. So just wanted to make sure you're aware.
I would just also say, Spencer, on the TIF and the expedited timeline of June, I think the TIF conversation has been happening in pockets, and it is not, there's been no education really around a TIF. The city hasn't set up one in a long time, so who's ever leading that charge? If that's the goal, should probably start doing some type of education across that, because I've just been hearing snippets of a TIF and nothing concrete, but it's out there in the atmosphere. So I think we need to address it.
Thank you. I think our goal here is to get a little more data and study so that we can be out there educating people.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Spencer. Items seven and eight will be briefed by Sarah Clement Sampson.
Thank you, Council President and Council members, for your time. I briefed you at the Urban Experience Committee about the one-year contracts for the community centers with the intention of individual development for each of the centers and then long-term contracts after that, about four-year contracts after that.
Sarah, I'm sure you told me there was individual conversations with each center as to expectations in this one year and what the next year would look like.
Yes, I have been out and visited every single one of them and scheduled about six-week visits to start just building that relationship and then plan out what that year will look like with them individually.
Councilwoman Dillon.
Yeah, thanks for your work on this, Sarah. And I'm curious about the Southwest Community Center. We did have folks come down testifying, you know, about the kind of future sustainability. Is this 32,000, is this enough to kind of cover some of their needs long-term?
Yeah, so that, well, it covers their needs for the year, and then hopefully with that we can look at what long-term they need to do, sort of thing. Yeah, in that four-year plan.
And that's just programming?
Yes.
For the Southeast?
It's operating.
Southwest.
It's operations.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go on to the next one.
And then the Chase Youth Commission is basically the same exact four years, another four years with that, and we did have a conversation about them coming and presenting to you.
Absolutely. I will have to say, meaning in the community's challenge as to what this organization does and investment in our young people, so I think that needs to be brought to the forefront. So thank you for that. Any other commentary on that? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Moving now to the legislative agenda, we have a resolution to be briefed by Melissa Owen, who was on screen and is now in person.
Hi, Melissa Owen. I'm with the Planning Department, here to brief you on the proposed extension of a development agreement for vistas at Beacon Hill. So this is the same development that you all passed an ordinance on to do the PUD overlay, the planned unit development overlay, this last July. And we're just in need of a little bit more time here to finish up some minor changes to the actual face of their plat, as well as get final sign-off from the city and acceptance of the city for the public infrastructure, things like streets and sidewalks and the water tank. So those are all things that are very close to being completed, but we just don't think we're going to have all those things turned around before the current development agreement expires. So we want to have something in place that would extend through the point that we could actually have an approved final plat recorded with the county. Any questions?
And what type of timeline is that?
I should have an update, hopefully, on the water tank this week. As of last week, streets were paved, for instance, and they were pouring sidewalks. So we're very, very close. In the process of reviewing revisions to their plat right now, and we have just some couple minor corrections, and then the timing items related to the conditions of that preliminary plat and the prior development agreements being things like the infrastructure.
Yeah, I was there on Friday, and streets are paved, a lot of sidewalk was poured as well, so looks like it's coming together.
And we're very close on building permits also. So once we get the plat finalized, we can move forward with building permits as well. So very close. Yeah.
Exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and next, Ordinance C 36608, briefed by Adam McDaniel.
Good afternoon, Council. This is the ordinance that we briefed a couple of times that updates our illegal dumping ordinance to reflect the new penalties in state law. Any questions?
Are we adopting those by reference or are we putting them in? Sorry, I can't remember.
We're going to repeal our local litter ordinance and just adopt it by reference.
And Kevin, are you coming up instead of Brandon? All right. The next 17 items will be briefed by Kevin because he's also going to cover for Casey.
Yeah, only six this time.
Great.
So I'm just here to brief you on the five private applications for comprehensive plan amendments and the one city-sponsored. Actually, the first one has become a city-sponsored one. Anyway, the six applications for comp plan amendments, we have had no changes, no comments since the last time I spoke to you. They're all exactly the same as they were at the study session. So and we're hoping to bring those to you. Is it December 2nd or 4th? Now I'm confused. Is it the second? The second. So we'll bring those to you December 2nd for a hearing. Thank you.
And I don't believe we need briefing on the hearing, so I think that's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the advanced agenda.
Second?
It's been moved to second to approve the advanced agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes, abstentions? We are in recess until 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.